They really play basketball.
Competing your own category.
Yeah, I think they. I'm trying to think, you know, like darts, basketball.
No.
Darts and bowling.
I'll look it up.
Oh, I need that one.
It's a game.
Okay.
Takes care of itself.
Okay. Okay.
Who's where you get them? There are rules for kids that just aren't interested, but also supports some kids that wouldn't have access to.
Do you think we have enough numbers to create that?
Maybe, maybe six, twelve. It just came to my mind because I, man Dan just got some word for doing that on ESPN or something like that. That's been a major push for those districts that it includes culturally in. Skiing, badminton, basketball, bocce, bowling, cricket, cross country skiing, cycling, dance, equestrian. Fight sports. Fight sports is a field hockey, figure skating, football, or hockey.
Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Jamestown Public School Board to order. It is Monday, November 3rd, 2025, 5:30 PM in the Thompson Community Room at the school. I'd like to recognize all those in the audience this evening. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any conflicts of interest? Conflicts of interest? Conflicts of interest? If not, moving on to school board norms. Melissa, will you read the board norms tonight?
The board developed norms are to share and respect opinions and speak with a unified voice once decision has been reached. Execute all duties of the school board in compliance with North Dakota Sentry Code. Properly prepare for meetings and commit to assessing board effectiveness and ensure high quality governance for all stakeholders.
Thank you, Melissa. We have nothing under public communications. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything a board member would like removed or anything clarified from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, is there a motion? Motion by Erin. Second by Jamie, but motion is second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving into our regular meeting, we don't have recognition correspondence under reports. We, there were, the school boards association was earlier in October. It was an opportunity for board members to attend. We had no new board members at the new board member meeting part. And Jason, Roar, and Christie Grounds both received awards. Any questions or comments on that as well? Okay, if not, moving on to board education. We have educational competency, state assessment overview. Mr. Gaylor and Mr. Connell, please come forward.
All right, give me just a second. All right, thank you. Dr. Leck asked us to come and speak about our NDA plus results. This would be normally in June. And results were delayed a little bit this year because of the new state assessment. We'll talk pretty extensively about what that new state assessment was, how we experienced that. And then a little bit about why it was delayed was they had to do all the scoring for writing by hand. Now that they've done that scoring and calibrating, they'll be able to automate that process. And we should see these results more quickly, which would mean we likely could report in June again on our updated scores. So I'm Adam Gaylor, Continuous Improvement Director for Jamestown Public Schools.
I'm Justin Connell, Assistant Principal at the middle school.
And Mr. Delzer could not be here, but he did help prepare this report for us. And he's the district assessment coordinator for the NDA plus. All right, so the state has adopted new standards over a period of time on a cycle. And those newly adopted standards then did different measures. And so they partnered then with a different platform to update our state assessment. And so this was our first time taking that new and updated state assessment. It breaks out the areas of ELA into different subcategory scores for us of comprehension, text analysis, and writing. And in math, it breaks it out into numbers and operations, algebraic reasoning, geometry measurement, and data and probability and statistics. And I mentioned that as well as that science is broken out into three areas just because what you see is the overall scores in this report, but we can break that out into subscores. And that's how we did some of our analysis into, you know, what we think maybe next steps might be for us. If you're interested in any of those sheets for analysis, things that we referenced throughout this presentation or specific subscores, just let me know. We wanted to keep this at the board level view, but there are lots of steps and processes that are going on behind the scenes to help support interpreting this data and helping our district move forward. Okay, and I don't know if, Dr. Leck, if you want to touch on this at all, but, or just jump in here.
Yeah, I can. So the next two slides are infographics that a superintendent and I worked on and put together another superintendent. It's just to make a point on proficiency. When we talk about proficiency or when it's reported in the media, there are some assumptions made. The assumption is that proficiency scores are the same everywhere. So what is proficient in Oklahoma is the same as what's proficient in North Dakota or Idaho or whatever. And that's simply not true. The reality is states determine proficiency scores. So every proficiency cut score, while they're reported as whatever district or whatever state has X level of students proficient, they aren't the same from state to state because the cut scores are different. So because teachers in every state determine what those proficiency scores are. So what this infographic does is it coordinates around what is standard and what standard is our NAEP scores. That's what's, you know, is a standard assessment that's given in fourth grade and eighth grade. And so this infographic kind of shows, or what it attempts to show is that it's awfully easy to make proficiency when the cut score is very low. It's quite a bit harder to make proficiency when your cut scores are very high. And what you see in North Dakota is the individuals and in our state, it's teachers that help DPI set cut scores. They have set that standard very, very high. And, and what this infographic tries to show you is that if you are looking at kicking a field goal, an extra point is a lot easier than a 50-yard field goal. In the states that you see across the nation that have, you know, lower cut scores, their proficiency rates may be higher, but their, their bar is very low. They're kicking field goal, they're kicking extra points or kicking a 25-yard field goal. In North Dakota, you look at those as much harder to, to reach proficiency. So I just want to make that point that this is coordinated with NAEP scores. So when we do look at our proficiency and we say, boy, in our school, we're better than the state or we're lower than the state's average, that actually is anchored to something. For us, that's NAEP. And so with our NAEP scores in North Dakota, we, we actually have achieved very high, as high as second in the, in the country, fourth in the country, in a couple of different areas. And again, this is the infographics, those two infographics in ELA and math are just trying to show that the proficiency rates are, in North Dakota are very, very high. And, and we will always push to have the absolute highest achievements and have the highest possible standards rather than kick that extra point, knowing that we can have so many more students reach proficiency. You know, that's just a number. What they're actually learning and showing is really what matters. So that, I probably talked longer than you wanted me to on those two slides, but that's, any questions about that? Just to reinforce, proficiency is set state to state. NAEP scores are standard.
Thank you. So now we have 27 seconds left in our presentation. No, I'm just kidding. But if you look at the infographic, the first one just references that reading in North Dakota, we're kicking from the 40-yard line. So not exactly a chip shot. And then in math, according to that comparison of NAEP scores and how we're doing in that and our, the rigor of our state assessment, we're kicking from the 50-yard line. When we look at, at NDA plus and ELA over time, what Mr. Delzer's done with these graphs is just to kind of color code. Did we, were we below the state average in a given year? Were we equal to the state average? And then were we above the state average? And these are the grades that are tested, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and then 10th grade. So these are the only grades that are taking that test. That's remained consistent. But over the course of time here, some of our assessments have changed pretty significantly. When we've, the state has partnered with different vendors to administer that state assessment. So I'd love to be able to stand up here and say, this is exactly apples to apples, but it's definitely not. But what we do see is the consistent thing is that we can compare to that state average and that those same grade levels have been tested. When you look at ELA, I'm going to have Mr. Connell kind of highlight some of the celebrations. And then we'll talk a little bit about maybe where we're going to go next steps with ELA.
So as I was looking through to try to discuss some of the celebrations, I noticed a few trends. And I know that they kind of last within the same year, but you know, if you look at where we maybe excel in some of our, in our strengths in our different schools, I want to key on 10th grade. We'll hit that again in math too. Where it says all areas have a high percentage of increase over, over the state. And I know we may not want to compete with the state all the time, but it's something nice to look at where you see in sixth grade, writing is one of our strengths, seventh grade text analysis, back in eighth, we start reading and writing a lot more. And now we see 10th grade how, you know, from fifth all the way through that we have grown in our skills. And now all of our areas are showing some of that success. You know, that's an important thing for us educators to see over time that it is a collective effort. And, you know, it's not just ELA, but we're writing more in science, we're writing more in social studies. We're writing more in our reading classes. So there's a lot of reading and writing that's happening. And in our state scores, we're starting to see that in that 10th grade, which is a great celebration, I think, overall for our school system. And that's, so I really wanted to holistically discuss that for celebrations.
So when you look at overall, writing is definitely a strength across all the tested grades. Text analysis was an area that kind of ebbs and flows. Some years there's, it was a strength for us. Some years it was not. And we need to have some vertical discussions about that sort of thing as well as comprehension. Because that was another one where increased quite a bit in third grade than it was to a lower degree in fifth grade. We were behind the state average. So we need to look at vertically aligning our curriculum. And this, this assessment in those bands that they break it down do help us do some of that analysis to make some of those decisions. Really what's important for you at the board level is that we're going to take this, teams are going to look at those analyses that we did and say, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Like Justin said, we've got more emphasis on writing in certain grade levels. We've got more emphasis on text analysis where we're introducing those strategies at certain grades. Does that correlate and jive with what the teachers feel like is emphasized and prioritized in our curriculum? Or do we need to make some adjustments to be better in alignment with the state? Or are we just happy with the overall product by the time a student gets from third grade through 10th grade? If we're achieving at those high levels in 10th grade. So those are the kinds of curricular discussions that we can have. Writing has been an emphasis through both of the literacy grants that the district has had in place for, and well, they're both expired now, but that's been, that was a period of about seven or eight years that, that was a real emphasis. And we've seen those results, that investment, that professional development, the time that teachers have taken to embed those strategies. We've, we're seeing those results. So definitely a good way to help us measure some of the impact of the things that we're doing. And then our PLCs, while they can't use the state assessment results, they're kind of an autopsy. They're not really like a checkup. They can't use that for informing their instruction right now. But they can make plans for curricular changes that they might need or resource adjustments, bigger scale, things like that. All right, we'll jump into math here. So you guys all have those tables in front of you as well. And you can see our current performance on the state assessment and some differences in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. All the other tested grades for this year did perform above the state average in math. And so we did a little bit of analysis on that as well. And we'll talk about that in a second. But maybe Justin, you want to highlight some of the celebrations in math?
Yeah, I can definitely do that. So I have some other graphs up here that Adam mentioned he could print for you guys. He gave me nice color, but some of the things that you're seeing is vertical alignment at work. I like to speak on this one because I was a part of this for greater part of where kind of the middle school is aligned. And then was a part of the high school conversations. And, you know, and there's some dips in, I believe it's seventh or eighth grade with geometry. You know, there's certain areas where we might dip and that is because during that vertical alignment piece, we said, you know, they're going to pick this up again in geometry or they're going to pick this up in algebra. So you see eighth grade heavy algebraic reasoning, you know, it should be that. That is what we work on largely in eighth grade. Seventh grade numbers and operations, that's a big, that's a big part of seventh grade. And then they get us into algebraic reasoning. So again, just that vertical alignment at work where we've been doing, you know, doing good work on that. And then along with these state tests to kind of reiterate math and English as well as the other subjects, we're seeing more analyze. We're seeing more explain and interpret. And those are big, those are big concepts at the middle level and at the young elementary level. And it's, it's very evident in the classrooms is if you get to go in there and, and see some of these teachers at work, that these kids are analyzing. And then we learn how to write and we learn how to do that in math. And these tests, they, they are pretty intense. Being a former eighth grade teacher, the probability and statistics are very high and the explaining is very high. It's, it's no longer solving a math problem and writing X equals five. We have to explain what five means and how it's interpreted within that problem. So there's a learning curve that as the math crews, we're starting to pick this up and get this. And then new state standards have us analyzing, interpreting more. You know, we're anxious to see if we can continue, you know, to score above the state and, and improve on ourselves here. So again, that all areas in math, that 10th grade at work, seeing great percentage increases throughout the grade levels is something great to see as a teacher.
So as we look at areas to grow, and I know the board has, we've had some conversations about things like vertical alignment before. When it comes to math specifically, we have a couple of opportunities coming up January 19th and March 11th. And the math teachers met early October at the secondary level to discuss what would our major things be that we'd wanted vertically align on? Well, one of them happens to be pretty simple. It's just vocabulary. What do we call it? Because on the state assessment, they might say, we want you to show us the product of this. And really what they're saying is multiply. And our kids have learned multiply that entire time. So we don't want our kids to get tripped up on a state assessment by language. And the state, Kim Carpenter has done a lot of leadership work with, for math at the state level. And they've actually produced documents that align those vocabulary for us all the way, you know, K through 12 with math vocabulary. They've got alignment of which standards and skills precede a student's understanding and which ones come after. And so now we need to dig into those updated state documents and say, do we have that explicit alignment that we need? If we don't, are we okay with that? And we're going to catch that up someplace else, as Justin said. Or making sure that we have that in place. So the, the, both the audit that we received from SEC's math kind of guru this fall yielded that result as well as some of the analysis of this. When it comes to the different areas, as Justin said, we just need to make sure that that's our priority. Standards aren't putting our kids at a disadvantage for the assessment or for life. And I think that any of you who've taken a math class understand that there's, there's an infinite amount of depth that we can go in our math courses. And there's a reasonable amount of time for kids to effectively learn that. And we really put a lot of trust and autonomy in our professionals in the district to be able to make those determinations. And we're committed to make sure that we have time set aside for those conversations and that we have resources that are aligned to support them and their decision-making in that. Anything else they want to talk, anything specific on the, I think you gave that example too. Okay, so science assessment. The only change that I guess I would make to this graphic and added an asterisk underneath that is in 2021, we went from 11th graders taking the science assessment back to 10th graders. And I think, I'm not sure the state's reasoning on that. I don't, Dr. Leck, I don't know if you recall why they did that.
So much gap maker.
Yeah, with ACT and work keys and that kind of thing. Yep. So the state made that change. That's the only difference really. But we did see a huge increase and, and maintained that increase above the state average. You can see that the level of rigor or the cut scores, as Dr. Leck described before, must have changed pretty significantly from 23, 24's version to the 24, 25. And similar to what Justin said about math, our standards in science call us to do much more deep thinking, higher level thinking than maybe they have in the past. And that's something that our science teachers have really dug into and are working through as well as incorporating more writing into science and technical reading into science as well. Because that's so foundational for them to be able to interpret at that level. They have to be able to understand, they have to be able to communicate it at that level as well.
And here's some of your basics. I mean, you can, you can read through the science ones here. We go at four, eight, and 10. But again, it's, we're consistently above, you know, our counterparts in the state. And I know that our, I know that our science teachers take this very seriously and they enjoy seeing this. And some of our hard work with, through Steve Dunn training has been very, has been very good, especially in our eighth grade. He's given us some strategies to help kind of push that engineering design process and how you make a claim hypothesis and explore it and reason through that, and which is what science is all about. And so that's, I don't want to say that that's new, but that's something that we haven't pushed as much and which is why we brought Steve in and has been very helpful to our eighth grade science teachers as well as our ELA. So a lot of this is building on each other. And you may, if you don't see that celebration in science, that may be where you see it, you know, in our ELA testing.
So the way that the science standards are set up, they're complex and there, there's like cross cutting concepts. And as Justin mentioned, engineering is also a part of that. So that's something that was recommended in our analysis of this was that we look at those phenomena, how those are connecting and make sure that where we're seeing growth, that we can kind of capitalize on that. And where we're not seeing as much growth in those bands, that we can address that in our curriculum alignment. Science does, has multiple instructors at the secondary level that are focused on those science courses. So they have pretty effective PLCs to be able to work through that. In some ways, I think as a state, not necessarily just our science teachers, but as a state, we'd benefit from the same level of support and guidance that we've received from the state in math and ELA. There's been more emphasis on supporting and resources to support math and ELA, professional development and curriculum work and to a lower degree in science. But still really satisfied with our results overall compared to the state average. But we want to keep, keep getting better and just might need some different resources to do that. Okay, so useful information. We talked probably longer than we intended to, but happy to answer any questions. Useful information for us. any questions. Useful information for us to make curricular decisions, vertical alignment decisions, alignment of resources. And by resources, that could be everything from textbooks to teacher time to work through the results that we're seeing. But the NDA+ really gives us limited information on things that would make, help us make instructional decisions for the classroom tomorrow on a by-student, by-skill kind of level. We do have some teachers, math, in our math department at the high school that are piloting a spinoff of the NDA+. It's actually a state provided tool. It comes at no cost to us, called NAVI. And those give kids prompts and problems from a question bank that are very similar to the state assessment. So what our math teachers have found so far is that that, and you know, Kim Carpenter would be a great person to come if we wanted to do a future board education on that or something. They're finding that the level of rigor that's in those problems maybe didn't always align with how they were instructing on a particular standard or set of, or strand within math. And so it's really helped her understand that rigor, and it helps kids get practice with the technology and the terminology, which we think, you know, we know our kids know a lot more than maybe what they show on a state assessment sometime. So if we can remove those barriers, we feel like that'll help them achieve at higher levels, both on the state assessment and in terms of their skills and in life. So the state has some really useful tools that they've added to the toolbox. Eventually, they plan to have NAVI available first for all the tested subjects. It's not available for science yet. But then really for any set of standards in the state, Pearson is working on building that for the state of North Dakota. So it'll help with our common assessments and a data system to help provide feedback to teachers and for kids too.
Any questions from the board? Comments? Erin?
So yeah, I think I've made well-known my opinion on comparing to state averages. But just kind of building on that a little bit further, you know, kind of with the state average, you kind of wash out the data to some degree. Would it make sense to look at a comparison, say, of the top three schools and then look at doing some benchmarking on what makes them the top school, as opposed to just a simple comparison to an average?
Certainly. I think you always need to consider schools' size and demographic pool and that sort of thing. But we could definitely find those top three. I don't, it won't be available on the state website yet. This is all data that's only available at the district level at this point. But the state, North Dakota Insights website would be updated, and I'm sure the state would share with us who those top three are, so we can compare to that.
Yeah. And like I say, just kind of doing some benchmarking. What, what are the demographics that support that? How does that compare to ours? What are, what does the curriculum look like with the approach that they're using? What's the interventions that they're using? Again, just kind of with the goal of being able to benchmark, you know, what are the top schools doing, as opposed to, again, that national or the state average?
Yeah. Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Comments? Yep, go ahead, Erin.
So then just a question on the data itself. So when I see a 32% to 48% proficiency, what, what does that mean in real terms as far as where our, our students at? So it's like, it's a ranking or evaluation against a standard. But 30, if 48% meet that standard, what's, what's the rest of the 52% look like? And what does that mean?
Yeah. So if you, I'm going to pull this up again. There's two parts to that. The state does break it down in comprehension, text analysis, writing. So they break it down into those strands, so we can dial in a little more specifically there. But then in terms of achievement, there's advanced, there's proficient, and then there's approaching proficiency as well. So we could break that down further for you as well to show you how those play out in those different categories. For this one, we just took proficient and advanced, combined that number to produce the percentage that you see in these graphs. So this is only proficient and advanced and not the lower category.
Just three categories?
Yep. Yep.
And you know, there's something to add too, and that was, things that I used to look at when I was in the classroom is how many of my partially proficient or near proficient is, what that cut score was and how close that was to the proficient cut score. Some kids are just teetering on the line, in both ways, right? They may teeter proficient, they may teeter partially proficient. So it's important to know, you know, if there was another metric you could look at, was say, okay, how close were we to getting, you know, more of our higher percentage in that proficient mark? So that's, that's something to look at too. And then it's, you know, it could be, like we had mentioned, a vocabulary barrier. So that's an easy one for the teachers. Let's, let's push vocabulary and let's, let's use it more. You know, being able to peek over the shoulder at times if some of the kids taking that test, they are intense. And it asks some high-grade level questions, where if you're not an eighth grade reader, that's going to be a very difficult question to answer, right? So we have many kids that are close to that partially proficient mark. Is another, is another one, I think, to, to look at, to see where, you know, what our cut lines look like.
So just kind of building on that a little bit more than is, does the standards-based learning model that we're, we're driving towards, will that help us in, in getting better results as far as, you know, being able to break that down to a finer level on a day-to-day basis and not just at these larger assessment levels?
I mean, that's, that's ultimately the goal, right? With anything that starts new, we might see a dip, right? Our staff's working hard, and it's a change in a lot of what we're doing and have done for, for some, for many, right? It's a whole new approach, greater communication. Do I, I mean, what I will love to say that, as someone that pushes standards-based learning, yes, that's absolutely going to happen. But, you know, we may see a dip because it is a new initiative. Eventually, with the types of questions they're asking and the communication that we're looking for with our students and from our staff, we can only hope and imagine that that's going to continue to go up because our standards are exactly what these kids are being tested on. So as we see and hear that language more and that vocabulary more, that's what we're hoping for. Yep.
I'd also go back to the example we gave Kim Carpenter using that NAVI platform. Our teachers are doing similar types of assessments, and they're really looking at what is the standard asking, and what is the depth of knowledge or the cognitive level of the, of the standard. We haven't been having those conversations, maybe in the same language in the past. We maybe would rely more on a resource that we had in place to, for those assessments. Now that assessment design and the, in combination with the state tool, I think, like Justin said, gives you much clearer alignment between the standard and the state assessment, which is the same standard.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaylor, Mr. Connell. We appreciate your time tonight and sharing this board education with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on in our agenda, we have the strategic plan dashboard is there for your information. Any questions on that this evening? Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Leck?
You have my written report in your packets. As, as it, you'll act on the calendar later, but I did provide additional context to that. So as we prepared the meeting, we have a staff-centered calendar committee that reviews and makes the recommendations. And the recommendation that they had by consensus on this two-year calendar is the calendar that you'll see as a recommended calendar. When you have eight drafts, four different calendars over two years, eight drafts, I really anticipated a lengthy meeting and a lot of discussion. And it was one of our most efficient committee meetings that we've ever had. The reason for that, I believe, and just in talking with committee members too, we, is that the calendar committee weighed pretty heavily on the survey responses. We had that survey I talked about last time. I think it was 133 responses that we had. And the committee was very serious about wanting to make sure that they could meet the highest priorities. And they were very pleased when they looked through the first, those two calendars and were able to meet almost all of the, well, all of the high priority and almost all of the mid-level priorities. And it actually was a very efficient meeting. One of the things that I wanted to bring up related to that, we can, I can answer calendar questions when we get to that on the agenda as well. But this is the first committee that we have this year that we're assessing. It's strategic plan goal 2.3. One of the metrics relates to, you know, some of the feedback we've had in our vital survey, in, in other surveys and other anecdotal situations in the district, is people wanting to make sure that they feel like, they have not always felt as if they're able to sway district decision-making, that they have an opportunity and an outlet for that discussion. So in all of our committees, we're breaking down and asking for an assessment at the end of the year or the end of the purpose of that group. So this committee, the calendar committee, was the first. So we had to go through and create that survey. But if you'll remember the strategic plan 2.3, we want at least that metric. We want 60% of our staff involved in committees that, that impact district decision-making. And we want positive ratings towards those staff feeling like they had, have influence. So we went through the process and started targeting committees. I just kind of categorized them as school board committees, district committees, advisory committees, and special committees. So one of the things that you'll see when we get to that report, that progress monitoring, is the listing of all those, the membership and all of those different committees, and then ratings on how they're feeling. Do they have influence on those, on those, on districts' decisions or not? So that's one thing you can look forward to. I can tell you right now, though, our goal of 60% of staff involved in committee assignments, we're well beyond that. In most cases, it's people serving in multiple committees, not just one. And so I did a little analysis on that, too. I'm still working on it. But we're, we're pretty deep, deeply ready for that to be completed. The Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Member of the Year, those are two initiatives that we're starting this year. We've always had the ability to recommend for Teacher of the Year. There has not been a procedure or a defined process for it. So it's been somewhat loose. And, you know, it's, it's come down to individuals making nominations. And so we've opened that up and we asked Stacy Jampcard, I know Jada Anderson was involved in that, Brian Knox, I'm sure I'm missing somebody. But they created a defined process and a timeline to ensure that we, at every building, have the, the opportunity to have nominations for Teacher of the Year. They would go to the county as our recommendations for Teacher of the Year. And then if they would advance from the county, they would be part of the state. Really, our goal is to make sure that we are having multiple individuals recommended for county Teacher of the Year every year. And that just hasn't been the, the case in the past. And so we have Teacher of the Year nomination forms out now. We're doing Support Staff of the Year in the, in the spring. So we wanted to separate those two. So teachers in the spring, support staff in the fall. Now anybody can nominate. We had a process for teachers and administrators to do that prior to, and that's been out, I believe, out to the public now as well. So through November 12th, you can seek out that nomination form and make a recommendation. That'll get pared down. It'll go to a central office. A school board member, teacher representative, and human resources will, will interview our finalists and then make that final determination for Teacher of the Year. So very thankful for Stacy for the, and those others for their work to get a process that we've lacked in the past. After-school program, Augusta, very happy. I referenced this, I think, at our last meeting, that Augusta now qualifies for the after-school program through the 21st Century Grant. That's not additional money. We included them in the application initially. So, and that doesn't come from our general fund. That's all grant-funded. We did begin the process to survey our Augusta families. And we already had enough to justify more planning for that after-school program to start at Augusta. So we're going to do a little more information, informational meetings with the Augusta Elementary staff, or Augusta Elementary parents. And then our, our goal is to start by January 5th. We don't know, we're hopeful to meet that, that kind of self-imposed timeline. But we certainly would like to make sure that we can provide that, provide that program to our Augusta families. As far as the communications plan, that's another strategic plan goal. That's 5.3. So I am in the process of doing that. I just have the first finalized draft of that communications plan. I've sent it out internally for some feedback in central office, and I'll be sending it to the strategic plan committee just for another set of eyes. You know, my goal would be at our second November meeting or our December meeting, to have that communications plan go, come before the board for approval. It's fairly robust. I looked at those four different goal areas that we outlined in the strategic plan, but creating short-term and long-term goals, it really becomes a three-year communications plan. Short-term goals, things that we want to accomplish in a year. And then long-term goals, things that we want to look to accomplish in the next two to three years. So that's something you can anticipate looking at. The last, in, in the near future, the last thing I had is the spotlight. I want to reaffirm the support staff members that we have, all of our support staff members are really amazing people that just care deeply for kids. And I wanted to outline too, we have, it's very unusual to have certified teachers. If you talk across the state, it's very unusual to have certified teachers retire and come back and work as paraprofessionals. That's, that tells me a lot about the culture of our schools, tells me a lot about them as professionals, to retire and come back and work in those support staff positions. And, you know, all of our paras are, are so valuable. And when you have teachers that come back, you know, so I just spotlight on Beth Fritz, Scott Fritz, Mary Stillwell, Mark Uchsted. They're all elementary teachers by trade, and they are serving Louis Lamore and Augusta. But the flexibility that those individuals provide to us, when we can come in and have a built-in, built-in substitute teacher, somebody that can really help our, a classroom teacher, it, it is, you know, they have a significant amount of experience and flexibility that comes. And we just want to recognize those four individuals for coming back and working alongside all of our other outstanding paraprofessionals. So with that, I'd stand for questions.
Any questions for Dr. Leck on the superintendent's report? Thank you, Dr. Leck. Moving on our agenda, we have nothing under old business, nothing under new business in the areas of activities, buildings and grounds, curriculum assessment, instruction, or finance. Number five, operations. We have A, approval of the 2026, 2027, and 27 to 28 school district calendars. Is there a motion? Motion by Melissa?
Second.
Second by Erin. We have a motion, a second for approval of 25, or 2026 to 2027 and 2027 to 2028 school district calendars. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And under personnel, we have the approval of the superintendent's formative evaluation. If you remember, we do this every November and March, two evaluations a year. I had an opportunity to sit down and visit with, thank you, everyone, first of all, for completing the evaluations. I had an opportunity to sit down and visit with Dr. Leck last Thursday, and we walked through the evaluations and all the comments. I do appreciate the comments that board members make also, so it gives a little more context to the scoring. And I mentioned to Dr. Leck, I said, I think this is one of the highest ratings that I think he's gotten for, for my recent memories. So it was a very good evaluation numerically. And there was good things to talk about. Number one, in the area of the first section, we talked a lot about the communications and the communication plan that is part of the strategic plan and the plan he's bringing forward to, to the board and to the, the strategic planning committee. We also got some good information. If you remember, we did that community survey about some different channels that our community also uses for, for communication, and we'll use those as part of, part of that plan. Also, area two, we talked about the strategic planning metrics are becoming more refined, and, and I think we're getting better at measuring what we want to measure. Area three, the finance committee has been having discussions and will continue to have discussions on budget priorities, along with the superintendent. And four- And four, we have an active curriculum committee. And we have a board member that also sits on that. And, and I think that that is, seems to be going very well. Number five, Dr. Leck is very visible, not only in our community and when we talk about community relations, I think of the larger community as well. He spends quite a bit of time and energy at the state level. And I think that also helps our district, all the different things that he's involved with, getting firsthand knowledge of, to help our district. And number six, again, I think the strategic planning and the finance committee are, are working with Dr. Leck on, on those areas as well. As we go through this, and we just also like to thank Dr. Leck for continuing to work in our district as well. If you remember, when we go through this, we go through each section and we need a motion for, and a, a motion and a second for each section. And there'll be a roll call vote for each section. And this is, yep, yep, yep. And, and part of our requirements as a board statutorily is to, the motion has to be either satisfactory approval or unsatisfactory approval for each section. So I'm going to read each, the label of each section and the score out of four. And then the board can make a motion for satisfactory approval or unsatisfactory approval for that section. So the first section is goal and vision setting with a score of three-point-six-eight out of four. Is there a motion? Motion by Erin for satisfactory approval. Is there a second? Second by Steve. So we have a motion and a second for goal and vision setting for satisfactory approval. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, Kristy, roll call vote.
Jamie Bear. Heidi Larson.
Yes.
Jason Roar. Oh, sorry, wrong one. Jacob Meyer. Aaron Roberts. Steve Velkamp. And Melissa Gleason. Six, yeah.
Motion approved. Moving on to number two, board relations, a score of three-point-seven-four out of four. Is there a motion for satisfactory or unsatisfactory approval for board relations? For satisfactory or unsatisfactory, of satisfactory approval? Okay. Motion by Jamie. Is there a second? Second by Melissa. We have a motion, a second for satisfactory approval of number, section number two, board relations. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, Kristy, roll call.
Okay. Jamie Bear. Heidi Larson.
Yes.
Jacob Meyer. Aaron Roberts. Steve Velkamp. Melissa Gleason.
Motion unanimously approved for number two, board relations. Moving on to section three, human resource management with a score of three-point-five-eight out of four. Is there a motion for satisfactory or unsatisfactory approval for section three? Motion by Melissa for satisfactory approval. Is there a second? Second by Jacob. We have a motion and a second for satisfactory approval for section three. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call, Kristy.
Heidi Larson.
Yes.
Jacob Meyer. Aaron Roberts. Steve Velkamp. Melissa Gleason. Jamie Bear.
Unanimous approval for section three. Section four, curriculum and student support services, A, score three-point-five-zero out of four. Is there a motion for satisfactory or unsatisfactory approval for section four? We have a motion for satisfactory approval for section four by Jacob. Is there a second? Second by Jamie. So we have a motion, a second for section four, curriculum and student support services. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call, Kristy.
Jacob Meyer. Aaron Roberts. Steve Velkamp. Melissa Gleason. Jamie Bear. Heidi Larson.
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously. Section five, community relations, three-point-three-eight out of four. Is there a motion for satisfactory or unsatisfactory for section five? There's a motion for satisfactory approval of section five, community relations by Melissa. Is there a second? Second by Steve. We have a motion, a second for satisfactory approval of community relations. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call, Kristy.
Jacob Meyer. Aaron Roberts. Stephen Velkamp. Melissa Gleason. Jamie Bear. Heidi Larson.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous approval for section five. Section six, operations and resource management, a three-point-six-three out of four. Is there a motion for satisfactory or unsatisfactory approval of section six? Motion by Melissa for satisfactory approval of section six. Is there a second? Second by Steve. We have a motion and a second for satisfactory approval for operations and resource management, section six. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Aaron Roberts. Steve Velkamp. Melissa Gleason. Jamie Bear. Heidi Larson.
Yes.
Jacob Meyer. Unanimous.
Unanimous approval for section six.
I was just going to say thank you for the feedback on the, on the evaluation forums. I always appreciate the comments. The more direct feedback I can have, the better work I can do. So I appreciate the time that you take every month to complete that, that evaluation and for the feedback tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leck, for serving our district. Moving on in our agenda, we have under policies and procedures. We have A, approval of amended policies. There are six of them. Would we like to do them all together? Or is there any you'd like to pull out for questions or comments? Okay. Doing them all together. Number one, first reading of policy BBA, school board elections and terms of office, with number one rescinding policy BBA, school board membership. Number two, amend policy BBC, method of filling a board vacancy and subsequent review of BBC-dash-E, school board application. Number three, second reading of GABE, human trafficking and exploitation prevention and awareness education. Number four, second reading of ACBD-dash-AR, school medication program regulations. Number five, second reading of ABAA, school district organization plan. Six, second reading of ACCB, protection for student victims of sexual offenses. Is there a motion to approve one through six? Motion by Erin? Is there a second? Second by Jamie. We have a motion, a second for approval of amended policies, one through six. Any discussion? Any discussion? Steve?
Maybe it got moved. I guess I thought when I read through this yesterday, there was one that we were rescinding also.
Yeah, that's in BBA, school board membership.
Number one.
It's under one.
And one.
One.
It's just a, yep.
New policy, replacement policy.
A replacement policy, yep. Yep. And good question. Any other questions? Any other questions? Any other discussion? If not, if not, any, you're good? Erin, good? Okay. Everybody, okay. If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Number eight, under tuition, approval of tuition agreement. Number one, Barnes County North. Is there a motion? Motion by Melissa? Second by Erin. We have a motion, a second to approve the tuition agreement with Barnes County North. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Nothing under other. Items for future agenda. Does anyone have an item for future agendas? If not, please let Dr. Leck or myself know. Under meetings to be scheduled, we have a school board meeting on Monday, November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, at 5:30 PM in the Thompson Community Room at the middle school. There's a retreat scheduled on Monday, December first, twenty-twenty-five, at 5:30 PM in the district office conference room. We'll probably have a strategic planning meeting coming up once you're ready for the communication plan to be reviewed.
I think I'll just send it out for feedback.
For the whole board?
If there is, no, to the strategic plan committee. And then we'll just provide it at a future meeting.
If we feel like we need a meeting, we can schedule one. Is there a finance coming up? Is there anyone, any other meetings we're missing? When is the finance?
We haven't set it, but we will be setting one soon.
Okay. I just don't want to miss any meetings on here. Any one, any other? I think health care is meeting on the seventeenth. I think seventeenth? The seventeenth. Three, three forty-five on November seventeenth. Okay. Anything else that we're missing? Okay. If not, complete your monthly superintendent evaluation, section two, board relations, and section five, community relations. There being no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.